Good evening and welcome to the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, November 30th, 2022. Has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Would you please call the roll?
Wyman.
Uh, here.
Carlin.
Here.
Herzog.
Here.
Kearns.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Selagi.
Here.
Wright.
Here.
Thank you very much. At this time, it's my privilege to introduce a student from Emmeline Cook Elementary, John Ford, who is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening.
I. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
John, we want to thank you for coming tonight and bringing your mom along with you for moral support. It's important because our guiding principle as a school district is students first that we have students at our feet. It helps give us the right mindset when we make decisions tonight. So I want to thank you for coming and present you with the such a big honor of situation for you tonight. So, thank you very much.
I don't know if I get a formal introduction or not, or if I just jump into my update. So, you know, I wanted to come with John tonight and do the pledge, but I also wanted to give a small update on some positive things that have been going on at Emmeline Cook while I was here. So, we just finished up last week, a week of giving thanks, and we spent a little bit of the week prior, last week, and then finished up this week in our -- we have a Monday morning meeting every Monday, and every Monday, all of the kids come to the gym, and we, you know, kind of debrief the weekend a little bit. We do some relaxation techniques. We have sometimes some interesting things and presentations, but at this one, there was a particular lesson like there is every week, and that was all of the different things that we give thanks for. So, you know, we have a morning greeting, and as part of that greeting, we asked them to just tell their neighbors some things that they're really thankful for. And then we, as staff, also looked around the room and said different people and positions around the schools that we were thankful for, and really modeled what that looks like for them. Later on in the week, we have scheduled every month, some schools call it like a mashup time. We have, it's called Cougar Time. It is a time we all get together in multi-age groups, and each classroom has about 30 kids in K through 5. And as a new student comes into the school, they get to be a part of this particular classroom, and our goal is, as they enter as a kindergartner, they have all of the same people and the same teacher all the way through, and it's never their classroom teacher initially. So they get a better opportunity to meet their entire school community and interact with both the big kids and the little kids. And one of the things that we worked on, we worked on a thankfulness chain, which each classroom, big kids helping the little kids ride out, and then construct a chain as each, as part of each room. And kind of to end the week, I invited in somebody from our local neighborhood that we were particularly thankful for, and that was the pastor of St. Andrews Church. St. Andrews Church has been a huge advocate of ours and the school districts and neighborhoods in, Pastor Karen Jewel von Buskirk, who is retiring, I think she is officially retired as of right now. And we brought her up and thanked her for all of her time and energy dedicated to our little community over in E. Cook, whether it be feeding hungry kids, supporting our Books on Wheel initiative, which is directly behind the church usually, or other things they've helped us deal with as well, including being one of our sites for our, like rally points and, and safety issues. So they have been invaluable in supporting us as a school. So we also were thankful for her.
Very nice.
Very nice, Mr. Roll.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks for supporting John. All right, moving on, we have our land acknowledgement from Dr. Davis.
Yes, as, as we gather today, we'd love to acknowledge that in Oshkosh, we are on the ancestral homelands of the Ho-Chunk Nation and the Menominee Indian Tribe of Wisconsin, who lived along the western shore of Lake Winnebago, Wisconsin's largest freshwater lake entirely within its border. We acknowledge these indigenous sovereign communities who have stewarded this land throughout the generations and pay respect to their elders, past and present. We welcome the duty and opportunity to share stewardship of these lands.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to move anything on the agenda as printed?
I would like to pull two items individually considered, numbers nine and number 10.
You're referring, then, to the consent agenda, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Consent resolution. So nine and 10?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else? I would like to pull number 11. So nine, 10, and 11 will all move to individually considered resolutions. Is there anyone else who wishes to make a change?
No.
Mrs. Wyman, did you have one?
I wanted to change number four B, switch it out with D, so Facilities and Finance will go last with other reports, and Mr. Konstantin can update us on the naming of Webster Stanley School.
Good idea.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes, wish to move something on the agenda in terms of the order? Under Wisconsin law, we can't add anything, but we can move things around on the agenda. All right, so there's a proposal to change under four, under board administrative reports, which Facilities and Finance with Policy and Governance, just change the order, and to take from the consent resolution, numbers nine, 10, and 11, and move those to individually considered resolutions. Is there someone who'd like to make that motion?
I'm ready.
I'll second.
Mr. Kearns and Mr. Wright, please call the roll.
Carlin.
Aye.
Herzog.
Aye.
Kearns.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Selagi.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Wyman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Then we're on to board and administrative reports, starting with the board president. And I know that we have a couple of retirements this evening. Jamie Durga has been an EBD teacher in the school district since 2015 and currently serving at Oklaun Elementary School. Tad Mandike is a social studies teacher currently at Perry Tippler Middle School since 1997, so a 25-year veteran of our district. Donna Shepherd, the CLC site coordinator at Merrill Middle, has been with the district since 2005, and James Thevo has been a janitor at Webster Stanley Middle School since 2001. We want to take this opportunity to thank all of these individuals for their dedication to our district, to our students' families and their buildings, and wish them well as they start this new phase of life called retirement. So, thank you to Jamie, Tad, Donna, and James. Next is a WASB update. I had an opportunity to attend an advocacy workshop sponsored by WASB in November, earlier in November. It was put on by several staff members, including those from the government relations area, as well as a gentleman who serves in member services. I thought there were some wonderful ideas in terms of interacting with lawmakers, what to do, what not to do, in terms of sharing our issues and our concerns and how state law impacts our schools. So I had gotten permission to run enough of these for all of you so that you could share as well. I also wanted to note that the State Education Convention is coming up in January. It runs from the 17th through the 20th. Oshkosh is going to be well represented there. We know that Dr. Davis submitted a proposal, which was accepted, on the naming of the new Vell Phillips Middle School. We know that our transition program for students with special needs, headed up by Mary Beth Connors and supported by others in the district, including, I'm just drawing a blank, Patty Kimball, and, thank you, Chris Steinheiler, and I believe Linda Piran is part of that group. She will be presenting. And North High School Corral is going to be singing and representing our district on Friday morning. Many times, the musical entertainment is provided by music groups south of Highway 33, but I'm delighted that we have Oshkosh representation at that event. And there is still time to sign up if any of you are planning to attend. Stephanie is going to be our representative to the policy and governance group that will meet on Wednesday. And I'm also thrilled to report that we had two high school students who have had a passion for photo education, and our board followed up with a recommendation that we support via a resolution, their, their work in the district, and submitted a proposal to be considered by all 421 public school districts and the 15 CISA districts, and that has been accepted. So it will be voted on by the entire public, public school group across the state. So lots of representation of Oshkosh at this event, and if you haven't had a chance to look at the agenda, I'd encourage you to do so, and plan on spending some time in Milwaukee, getting to know other board members and networking and seeing what we can bring back. We will not have a book report type thing in January, but we encourage you to, to participate as much as your schedule's allow. Thank you. Dr. Davis?
Yes, the superintendent's good news report for tonight. So, starting with a continuation of success, team that's been very successful in the past, the Boxine Vulcan, first Lego League team from Carl Treger Middle, Perry Tippler, and Elps, and Oakwood Elementary recently competed in the Lake Shore Technical College Regional Tournament. They competed against 30 other Wisconsin teams and won first place in Robot Design, in the Robot Design Award. The team is advancing to Maguano Sectional Tournament on Saturday, December 10th. Additionally, the team's mentor, Eric Elifson, is the recipient of the Coach Award for his outstanding dedication to the league and to our students. So congratulations to Eric and all of the students that are involved. Great job to everyone. Oshkosh West students from Level 3 Global Academy recently had a great time getting to know Meg Lara, a published children's book author. Meg shared her experiences with the Spanish language and her process of creating and publishing a children's book in Spanish. This experience was a great reminder that representation matters and helped students better understand the creative writing process. Second graders from E. Cook, who we heard from tonight, spent the month of November creating the things that they are thankful for. Their second grade teacher, Ms. Knoblock, wrote a list on a pumpkin, which was then used as a centerpiece for their pumpkin pie snack provided by the school's PTO the day before Thanksgiving break. So a pretty cool project there. Webster Stanley Middle School students learned a valuable lesson on the meaning of gratitude and paying it forward. Students and staff participated in their first Penny Wars Challenge to raise money for the Oshkosh Boys and Girls Club. They were able to donate over $1,000 for Thanksgiving meals given at the, given to Boys and Girls Club families. So awesome job to everybody there at Webster Middle. Throughout the month, and in the days leading up to Veterans Day, schools have dedicated, schools throughout the district had special events and engaged in classroom learning to grow an understanding and appreciation for veterans. We're grateful for all of those who joined in these special events, those who shared their experiences with students and all of the veterans that are part of our district family. So got an opportunity to attend a couple of those events, and they were, again, phenomenal. So thanks, everyone, for their service and commitment. This was mentioned before, but deserves a second, I think, acknowledgement. Emmeline Cook Elementary School students and staff had the opportunity to wish Pastor Karen well as she retires from St. Andrews Lutheran Church. For the past 27 years, there's been no better friend and neighbor to E. Cook and its students and families than Pastor Karen. We're helping families in need to spearheading the Oshkosh Feeding Hungry Kids Summer Program, to supporting the Winnebago Area Literacy Council. Pastor Karen's generosity has been endless. We certainly are grateful for her generosity and the congregation's commitment to supporting its neighborhood and its neighborhood schools. So thank you again to Pastor Karen. And again, want to continue a reminder of our COVID-19 plan for the school year that can be found on the district's website. And then finally, just a list of what's been a very busy month, but also very fulfilling, and just appreciate everybody's welcomeness as I make my way through the schools and throughout the community, have a lot of great interaction with, with people across, across the board, so. And that concludes the superintendent's report for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Moving on, then, we have the district administrator's supplemental reports. This is going to be given tonight by Mr. Kemmer, who participated in the November 9th board listening session.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I pinched in for Dr. Gunlock during the November session as the note taker. We had one participant at our listening session. The individual came to thank the board for their vote to remove Merrill Middle School in favor of more green space. The individual thought that it was the right decision, and it was really made in the best interest of kids, so they appreciated that. The individual also gave a name recommendation for the new elementary school, and that was Harry Furlong, who was a beloved industrial tech teacher at Merrill back in the 60s and 70s. So that was the gist of it.
Thank you. Any questions?
Sure.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kemmer.
Sure.
Next, we move on to committee reports. We'll start with education.
Yes, so we met on Thursday, November 3rd, and everything we talked about at that meeting was discussed on the November 9th board meeting during the workshop. So I don't know that I need to go in detail anymore. We will meet tomorrow morning and discuss school report cards. So, thank you.
Thank you. And the time of that meeting tomorrow is?
8:00 a.m.
8:00 a.m., thank you. And open to the public, like all our committee meetings. Very good. Next, then, we have Policy and Governance.
Well, thank you. Policy and Governance Committee met on Tuesday, November 1st, at 1:00 p.m., and we discussed 15 different policies. The main one being District Policy 7510, Use of District Facilities, which centered around if access should be allowed to use district facilities on Wednesday nights after 6:00 p.m. So we had a lot of discussion about that, and we decided to bring that forward to the full board to discuss this evening. Most of our other policies we discussed were just language updates regarding student records, head lice, use of tobacco, the policy, Policy 5512, Use of Tobacco and Nicotine-related Policies or Products. Policy was revised to specifically include the term possess within the list of prohibited activities in violation of the policy. And then we had a lot of just grammar corrections and things we cleaned up. So to keep my report short, I won't go over all the grammatical changes we made. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. They're all posted on the district's website if anyone is truly interested in finding each and every grammatical update. Thank you. All right, next, then, we have the Legislative Committee.
Thank you, Dr. Herzog. Legislative Committee met on Thursday, October 27th, at 8:00 a.m., and we really focused on creating bullet points and narratives around three key areas, those being voucher impact, advocacy around per pupil revenue increase, and special education funding. We have continued our talks on how to create awareness on the voucher impact in the community, especially to the taxpayer who is spending $4.7 million on vouchers. And so we talked about how we're going to produce a document that will outline that cost and where it's going, and we talked about maybe putting an article in the Oshkosh Herald and these kinds of things. And our goal is to have bullet points and talking points on each of these key three areas when we go to legislative breakfast in January, when those begin again. We also talked about our meeting, or anybody who had an update on meeting with their legislative representatives gave an update. Our future meeting is TBD. I think we're rescheduling next week, so TBD on our next meeting, probably the week after December 8th, but we will post it publicly when we have the dates. Thank you, Dr. Herzog.
Thank you, Mrs. Carlin. And our, our final committee report for tonight is that of Facilities and Finance with Mrs. Wyman.
Thank you. Our last meeting was held on Tuesday, November 5th, 15th, at 1:30. The main topic for that day were, was the result of the naming of our new elementary school, and I'm not going to give away, Nate, we're going to wait till, if you could wait till the end of the report, Mr. Konstantin from Bray Architects is going to come up and give you some more information on that. We're very excited. South Park Middle School Bandroom will be named after and have a plaque honoring Nancy Dolish. The Dolish family and the district worked together on this. Oshkosh West Turfield, a recommendation was made to go with the five, with five low bidders. The bids came in approximately $500,000 under budget. If approved, the project will be done the summer of 2023. The Health and the Dental Plan's performance continues to do well. The district is looking at ways to drive health plan costs to a more efficient base cost. Also, the district is reviewing a slight premium reduction in the dental plan without changes to the plan. So all good news there. The Budget Variance Report, the operational funds for the district made up of Fund 10 and Fund 27. When combined, the district is running more than 3% ahead of budget. Fund 10 is running ahead from last year, and Fund 27 is running a little bit behind, so it averages out. Our next meeting will be Thursday, December 15th, 7:30 a.m.
Thank you, Mrs. Wyman.
And now, Mr. Konstantin.
Hello. Thank you for having me tonight. As described, we're going to go through somewhat quickly, and feel free to ask questions at the end or stop me in between, but the survey one results of the Oshkosh New Elementary School. As we get started here, just a few brief bullet points. We're going to go over the results overview. We'll spend a little bit of time going through the breakdown of the results, and then just talk, remind you guys about the schedule that we've set forth for ourselves. So results overview, we did receive a total of 786 votes on the first survey. This is comparative in nature to the first survey received on the Vell Phillips Project. I think we received somewhere in the neighborhood of the high 600s. So a little bit more turnout this time around, and we did see a higher turnout for Survey Two. So we hope to see the same thing repeat itself here. Within the total vote category of 786, I would say 33% is your highest vote getter from the parent and guardian vote category, followed by OSD residents at 26%, student votes at 24%, staff votes at 14, and non-OSD residents at 3%, just tallying 26 total votes. We're going to break the votes down, at least for the, for the information tonight, into two primary categories. There were miscellaneous kind of votes that probably received less than 1% of total votes. Most votes were either for people or for places, and so we're going to break that down for you based off of the five categories that we started off with here. So as far as people go, we had all votes, when we collected all of the Poberesny names, and that includes Tom Poberesny and Paul Poberesny, and then there were votes just for Poberesny. When we include all of them, they were the top vote getter for, for all votes, so that includes all categories across the board. Shortly thereafter, followed by Webster Stanley, and then a small drop off to Jesse Jack Cooper, and very equivalent, equivalent numbers to Menominee. From there, it's a pretty, pretty big cliff, and we have a wide variety of names. I'm not necessarily going to go through all of these for speed of the presentation, but if you, if you have any questions, feel free to let me know. Then if we switch over to the place side of things, we received 41 votes for Menominee. We did include, if you recall, Menominee in the people slide as well. We feel that it belongs in both, as the Menominee Park is named after the tribe, so it is both a people and a place. So going back to the place votes, that was the largest vote getter, obviously being adjacent to the park, and has quite the influence, I'm sure. Then quite a big drop off when it goes to Winnebago, varieties of lakes, like Lake, Lake Shore, Lakeview, Lakeside, excuse me, Millers Bay, Park, again, Parkview, Parkside, and so forth. Keep it moving here. So that is votes for all, all categories. If we look to break that down a little bit, and as mentioned earlier, you guys are students first, you are student guiding principals, so it made sense to review the student category first. When looking at people, or votes for people's names, Webster Stanley was the highest at 12 votes, followed by Menominee at seven, and then it jumps down into Martin Luther King, Dorshner, Jesse Jack Cooper, Poberesny, Winnebago, Merrill, and Millers. Quite a big drop off there, but, but interesting, interesting numbers. And then the place side of things, Park was the highest, so Parkview, Parkside, combined for nine votes, followed by Menominee at seven, Maple at six, and then it goes into Lake, Winnebago, Millers Bay, Eastside, and Fox River. To keep going here, the next category we're going to look at quickly is staff votes. So on the people side of things, Poberesny received the highest votes at 12, followed by Menominee, then Jesse Jack Cooper, Webster Stanley, William Waters, Winnebago, and then a slow drop off from there, but the, the two highest vote getters being Poberesny and Menominee. Place, Menominee received the highest quantity of votes at 10, then a pretty quick drop off for Waters, and then it, it kind of evens out with Bay, Lake, some version of Bay, some version of Lake, Winnebago, Millers Bay, and then Park. The next category we'll look at is parent and guardian votes. So on the people side of things, Poberesny received 22 votes, then it drops down to Jesse Jack Cooper at 13, Webster Stanley also at 13, Menominee at 10, Chief Oshkosh at nine, and then it drops down to six votes and below. On the place side of things, Lake received the highest quantity of votes, again, combination of the two different iterations, and then it dropped down to three and lower at that point. OSD residents, Webster Stanley received the most votes on the people side of things at 24, Jesse Jack Cooper at 19, Poberesny 17, Menominee 14, Dorshner at nine, and then it drops to Merrill and Winnebago at seven, and then everything else was five votes and less. On the place side of things for OSD residents, Menominee, again, at the highest vote getter at 14, Winnebago at seven, and then the remainder at three votes or less for the remaining topics. So that's kind of a quick breakdown. We didn't include the non-OSD resident votes, it just was such a small piece of the pie, it didn't, there was no clear vote getter there. So when we look at all votes, not excluding, or not looking at just place or just people, and we look at all votes, Poberesny did come in at 57 total votes, Webster Stanley at 55, Jesse Jack Cooper at 41, and Menominee at 40, and then a pretty big drop off for Dorshner, Merrill, Chief Oshkosh, Winnebago, at the 16 and 15 range, and then Louis Hine at 12.
And, and one thing I left out of the Facilities and Finance report was the committee is recommending that we accept the top four names for future consideration.
Yes.
For the next part of the survey.
Yes, thank you, Beth. And so as mentioned, as recommendation would be to move forward with Survey Two for those four names. Looking ahead, as far as schedule goes, we are sitting here on November 30th, so the third bullet point down. Survey Two would look to launch on Monday, December 5th. That similarly to the middle school process, would sit open for seven full days, would close on the 12th. school process, would sit open for seven full days, would close on the 12th, and then we would look to present survey two data to you on the school board meeting on January 11th. Any questions? Happy to go back to any slide.
Thank you. I would just like to clarify how we will get the survey out. I'm assuming that for parents and students in the district, we can easily get that out by, by email. I'm wondering about the, the other residents in the community who do not have school-aged children.
Yeah, that's a great question. I believe, I had worked closely with Katie on the survey one process, and survey one was advertised in the local newspaper. It was put in display, I believe, in certain libraries for those that maybe didn't have access to vote electronically in other locations, and other news outlets that Katie was pushing that information out to. So, obviously, like you mentioned, the easy access to students and parents, but then the same, same pathways that occurred in, in survey one would occur in survey two.
Well, and I should've added, the staff are also part of that easier group to connect with besides the students and their, and their parents, so thank you for that clarification.
How long was survey one open? Was it also a week?
Survey one was open for two weeks. So, this, this process, as far as timeline goes, mirrors the first process, so we sat open for two weeks on survey one and then a single week on survey two. The, the reason being is that survey one was kind of open-ended, so it was, you know, anything and everything underneath the stars, and we saw that in the survey results. It's cleaned up here, but we saw that, and that's okay. And then survey two is, is multiple choice, and, and there's no, there's no empty box there, it's, it's check.
Did you say last time survey two had more respondents than survey one?
Yes.
And that was also open for only a week?
Yes.
So, my thought went to, when it's open for two weeks, there's enough time to advertise in the Herald and give people enough time, but if it hits just right, they may not see it till it's already closing, and so that's why. But if you said last time we did the same thing, we had more respondents from survey two?
Yeah.
Then I'm good with that.
Mrs. Carlin?
We had 700 and something responses. Is that a good number based on, like, where does that fall into your normal with other school districts? Is that higher or lower? And then, my second question is, if you think the second survey will be significantly higher?
Yeah, I would say for a population such as Oshkosh and the neighboring communities that spill into Oshkosh area school district, the numbers are a little bit lower than we would expect. I think I would've maybe expected 1,500, 2,000, somewhere in that neighborhood or higher. I think that's what we saw on survey two, and so I think it's just a little bit easier for people to pick from a multiple choice instead of maybe come up for something, and that's why we're seeing a little bit of the lower numbers on survey one.
And I'm sorry, I forgot your second question.
Oh, no, that was my second question. Do, or was, do you expect more in the second survey? And the answer is yes, you do.
Any other questions or comments?
I'll make a comment to the facilities committee. I appreciate the broad representation of people and places on that final four, so I think that'll give the community some, something to think about, so thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Consedine, for joining us and for all your work in preparation for the first survey and now the second survey.
Yeah.
Along with Katie Neiman.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, our next agenda item is actually a non-agenda-related public forum. Do we have anyone who has signed up to speak to the board tonight on a non-agenda-related item? Mr. Callahan, let me just read the rules for you. I like to follow rules. So, when addressing the board, we ask you to state your name and full address and the topic you wish to address. If you are acting as a spokesperson for a particular group of individuals, please indicate the group you're representing. Second, please state clearly and concisely the matters of concern. Limit your comments to three minutes, and please remember that the use of specific names of district personnel by title or identifiable descriptions may lead to legal liability. In such instances, please pursue the district's formal complaint process by contacting the superintendent's office at 920-424-0160 to direct you to the appropriate administrator. Okay, we're ready.
Great, thank you very much. My name is Matt Callahan. I live at 2780 Oakwood Circle in Oshkosh, Wisconsin. No complaints today, only compliments. I just want to speak briefly to thank the school board and the OSD administration for their ongoing support of our athletic programs. I began coaching freshman soccer at Oshkosh North in 2005, and I became the boys varsity coach at Oshkosh West in 2007. At that point in Oshkosh, we were one of the only school districts that played their games on turf fields. As time went on, that changed, and we became one of the only school districts that were playing, that didn't own their own turf field, and that led to a lot of challenges, scheduling challenges. We repeatedly had issues trying to get non-conference games at home due to stadium availability at Titan Stadium. Last year, we hosted a, and I use in quotes, home playoff game in Appleton because Titan Stadium wasn't available, and in addition to scheduling, when you play a sport in which the ball rolls on the ground, practicing on grass and then playing on turf is a bit of a competitive disadvantage. This past summer, though, a turf field was completed at Oshkosh North High School, and the addition of that field had an immediate impact on the experience that we've been able to provide. Earlier in our season, when Titan Stadium was booked, we were able to host non-conference games at Oshkosh North. Again, in years past, all of those games would've had to have been away games. At the conclusion of the playoff seeding process this year, both Oshkosh North and Oshkosh West were seeded high enough to host a home game, and with the north field as an option, both north and west were able to host a game at 7 o'clock at night under the lights with a lot of students and fans there. As the playoffs continued and the weather worsened, we were able to go and practice on the north turf field when our west field was too wet. This helped give us the same training environment that our competitors had, which helped us experience continued success. In closing, I just want to thank the school board and the school district administration, again, for supporting our athletics through the creation of better facilities. The Oshkosh North turf field has only been in play for really one season, and it's already had a large positive impact on the experience that our students receive. So, thank you very much for all of your work and support.
Thank you very much.
I also wanted, before Matt leaves, I also wanted to just acknowledge just the success that his group had through his leadership with the conference championship this year, so if we can give Matt a round of applause.
Thank you, Matt.
Yeah, thanks, Matt.
Our next agenda item would be agenda-related public forum. There is no one who has signed up for that, so we will move on to the consent resolution agenda. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background material on each item or has discussed at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. Need a motion for items one through eight?
So moved.
Ends 12, I'm sorry, ends 12.
Second.
Who moved? I'm sorry.
I think I did.
Thank Mrs. Wyman, and the second was Mr. Kearns. Please call the roll.
Ruzak.
Aye.
Kearns.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Solaji.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Wyman.
Aye.
Carlin.
Aye.
Resolution carries.
Thank you very much. We have three individually considered resolutions, which we moved to that category at the beginning of the meeting when we reviewed the agenda. The first of those is updates on policy 7510, use of facilities. This is resolution number nine. Be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approve updates to policy 7510, use of district facilities as filed with the secretary to the Board of Education. Tom, Mrs. Solaji moved, and?
Second.
Mrs. Carlin, second. Any discussion?
I called for it, so I will, this, this item spoke to me a little bit in, in certain ways, so I'd just like to, to share some thoughts as, as we do this, and major points in this report is historically Wednesday evenings and Sundays were set aside for family time and religious practices. In years past, religious classes and events were scheduled on Wednesdays. This practice has seemed to shift, and classes could now be potentially held any night of the week. For this reason, it was proposed that Wednesday evenings be opened to allow for use of the facilities, and the Policy and Governance Committee has recommended that we change that policy to remove the Wednesday night option and open that up. And so, having said that, got me thinking about some things, and I just want to kind of share what that is. And so, I'm very happy to see the change to Wednesday nights to allow for activities and not be blocked out for family time, or more likely, religious activities. As a school district that prides itself on equity, religion is a big part of that. Dr. Davis has said in the past that we should be looking at challenging some of the traditions that have been around for a long time that may no longer seem as relevant, specifically trying to find ways to pay student teachers. And so, having thought through that, it kind of made me think more, so this is one of those items as well. Not only are we becoming more diverse in our community based on different cultures and religions, but many more are not claiming any affiliation to religion at all. Based on the last meeting's demographic numbers from the 2021-22 school year, we are 70% white and obviously 30% not white, with at least five different groups represented in that minority. I'm not sure if many of you know, but the numbers for religious faiths in Wisconsin are quite similar. Well, I understand, it's important to note that 71% of Wisconsinites declare they are Christian, 25% classify themselves as unaffiliated. That means 25% of Wisconsinites are not part of any religion at all, very similar to 30% of students who are just in our district who are not white. When we talk equity, it is important to note that it involves race, culture, gender, and religion. More people in our community are nonreligious than maybe we realize. When I was at the high school graduation ceremonies this past spring, I noticed at least one religious song, more specifically, a Christian song taken from a verse from the Bible, that was played at the west graduation, and I believe another one from the north graduation. While that may have been more acceptable in the past and been a tradition, I would urge us to, to be different and maybe be better. I'm confident that there are plenty of songs to choose from that are not religious for a public school graduation. We represent everyone in our community, black, brown, Hispanic, male, female, non-binary, Christian, Muslim, atheist, atheist, and everyone else I didn't mention. We need to make sure we are thinking about that as we make even the smallest decision because our community and our students deserve it. I absolutely accept and support this item. I thank policy and governance for bringing it up and talking about it. It got me thinking a little bit deeper about what that means, and so, as I said, I support this, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kearns. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this item?
No.
Please call the roll.
Kearns.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Solaji.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Wyman.
Aye.
Carlin.
Aye.
Ruzak.
Aye.
Resolution carries.
Thank you very much. Next, we have resolution number 10. Be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approve the contracts for the new field turf system for West High School filed with the secretary to the Board of Education.
So moved.
Second. Kearns and Mrs. Solaji. Any discussion?
I asked for this one as well, so why don't I just keep going?
You're on a roll, Mr. Kearns.
Can I ask for Mr. Nihans to come up and just answer a couple of questions?
Of course.
Don't worry, it's all stuff we've talked about before, I just want to put it out there, so we, so there's been discussion about the field size, and there was a lot of conversations regarding that and what it would mean. At the end of the day, I think the conversation was that it would be built 65 yards wide so that it, in theory, could host a varsity soccer game, even though it won't because we don't have the capacity of the stands and everything around it, is that right?
That's correct.
So, I wanted to make sure, because if, as long as we can host a varsity game, then I think it's fair to put a JV game on that same field, and so, based on the size of that, I just wanted to, to make sure, because I know I've talked to some of you as well about that, and we've talked in other meetings, and so I was very happy that we came to that and that the JV and, and practicing might be more important, right? As Mr. Callahan had said, that, that offers a lot of other options, too, so that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other discussion on this item?
Yeah, I'm.
Mr. Wright?
Well, I guess I'll state some, some of the obvious. I'm really excited for this project to start because I, I think that it provides a lot of excellent opportunities for our students and our community. Anytime we can get, have more participation in activities that we're hosting and host more activities and draw more members of our community and children into positive environments, I'm really encouraged by that. I mean, in, in addition to that, it's something that's needed so that we can be competitive with other school districts. Something that I go back to on a regular basis is that we, we as a community need to be competing in all spaces, academic, athletic, extracurricular, because all the other school districts are doing that as well. And if we're not competing to provide the best services for our children and good facilities where they can compete on an equal playing field, that's gonna cost the, the community in the long run by not having as many families and students. So, I'm always supportive of items like this, especially when they come in under, underbid by, I think, a half a million dollars, so the community can know that as well, and yeah, that's it.
Thank you. This, this resolution is also available online, but I do want to point out that it is going to cover H&amp;H Civil Contractors, CR Fox Electrical, Sprint Turf, Field Turf, JW Industries for a press box, Musco Lighting for stadium lighting, Point of Beginning, that's Design and Construction Services, Contingency, General Conditions and Bonds, for a total project cost of $1,766,535.3. Mr. Kearns?
Can I add, sorry?
No, you're fine.
No, I don't, yeah, I agree with, with what Mr. Wright had said. I think it's also fair to understand that there, we have to, it's a fine balance between where we put our money, right? We don't have an infinite number of those dollars. And so, I had asked Dr. Davis at a previous meeting about, is this the best place for that money to go? Which, if that's the decision, as Mr. Wright had said, at some point, we have to invest in our facilities because it's the cost of not doing it than doing it, as, as Ms. Wyman has said before. But there were teachers concerned because they have, you know, issues in their own buildings and in their classrooms and, and things like that that are also out there that are, are difficult. So, balancing athletic facilities and actual learning, you know, I'm sure is a, is a balancing act every day. But that was kind of some of the feedback I had heard from, from staff directly that just wanted me to know that, that, and I appreciated that, but saying that, I'm very much supportive of this, so.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just, I agree with what he said. We do have to be, just to clarify, we do have to be investing in academics and athletics and extracurriculars, you know, all those things, so, yeah.
And we have heard from people who believe that our music facilities need to be addressed, and we do know that part of the Facilities Advisory Committee 2.0 addressed the, the need for a performing arts facility on the north side of the river because the Alberta Kimball simply can't support everything, and so that's, that's something this board or future board will have to consider moving forward. It's, it's all facilities for all students. Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Lee.
Aye.
Solaji.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Wyman.
Aye.
Carlin.
Aye.
Ruzak.
Aye.
Kearns.
Aye.
Resolution carries.
Thank you very much. Resolution number 11. Be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approve naming the South Park Middle School bandroom after Nancy Jean Dolish as filed with the secretary to the Board of Education.
So moved.
Second.
That was Mr. Wright and Mrs. Solaji.
Mr. Kearns.
Is there any discussion? I had asked that this be pulled. All of the board members, I believe, were contacted in the summer of 2021 by one of Mrs. Dolish's former students, Matt Green, and as well as some other former students, and Tim Dolish, Nancy's son, who was a member of the, the staff here in the district for many years. This brought back a lot of memories for me because when I worked in the central office, I had the good fortune of visiting classroom I had the good fortune of visiting classrooms throughout the district, and I always enjoyed visiting that of Mrs. Dolish. She always had a smile on her face. She accepted every child where they were, where he or she was, and moved them forward. She had such a positive impact on kids. She had such a can-do attitude that everyone could succeed in that classroom. And when, whether it was the Memorial Day Parade or one other parade, the South Park Band was prominently featured. It was one of the largest bands, if not the largest band, of all the middle schools, and they knew how to march. They knew how to play those instruments, and they brought a great deal of pride not only to South Park but to the entire community. And so, to me, this is a very appropriate use of this name. The music program that she was part of at South Park was very well-regarded, very well-respected. The percent of participation in that school was phenomenal for the size of the school. And a lot of that had to do with her in the bandroom and Mrs. Anderson in the choir room, and Mr. Schwabke in the orchestra room, necessitating an addition to the school, a music addition specifically because of the work of those individuals. And we are privileged tonight to have Nancy's son here. I don't know if you wish to make any comments.
Just trying to hold it together here, Dr. Green.
I am, too.
I just appreciate it being considered, and it means a lot to the alumni and my family. And it's just nice to hang out with some former colleagues and friends tonight as well, so appreciate the consideration. Thank you.
Absolutely. Any other comments to be shared? Please call the roll.
Solaji?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Wyman?
Aye.
Carlin?
Aye.
Rizzo?
Aye.
Carnes?
Aye.
Lee? Aye.
Resolution carries.
Very well deserved. It's important that we recognize staff and their contributions to their, to our students, their families, and our community. And Nancy Dolish fits in that group. Thank you all. Okay, are there requests for future agenda items at this time? Anyone? Okay, moving on. Are there any announcements?
Oh, I have one announcement. I had asked Sheri to put together the Christmas concerts, all the Christmas concerts, onto one piece of paper, which she did.
Nice.
So I'm excited that I can see them at a glance and hopefully get to as many as I possibly can.
Very good. Thanks, Sheri, and thank you for your request. I'd also like to make an announcement. We pride ourselves in the district in terms of having partnerships and collaborations with various groups. And in the area of literacy, there's the Altrusa Club